With this overlay because.
All right, I'm ready.
Didn't come back.
It already came back to us.
Okay, Mr. Marshall, let's see. You are the co-host of this meeting. I am looking for the recordings. We are recording. Amherst Media is with us in the house. You have a full board available to you right now. Nate Malloy is here with us. We're good to go.
All right. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of June 4th, 2025. My name is Doug Marshall and is Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, and further extended by Bill, House Bill 62, H. Point 62, as amended by Senate Bill S dash S period 2506, this planning board meeting will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. Meeting link is available on the Planning Board webpage and and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts to present the recording, we will post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. That is, in the event we are unable to present the, continue the meeting or, and that we have to interrupt it. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colden.
I am here.
Brad Hartwell.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Hi, Doug Marshall, I'm present. Johanna Newman.
Present.
And Karen Winter.
Present.
Board members, if technical issues arise and the discussion needs to pause to address the problem, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak after. On you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment on items not later on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Planning Board Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their view for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. All right, we'll go right into our first agenda item, which is approval of minutes from a previous meeting. We tonight have the meeting for March 19th, the minutes for that meeting. Did anybody have any comments on those minutes? Seeing lots of heads shaking, no. Johanna?
I move to approve the minutes from March 19th.
Thank you, Jesse.
I was second that.
Thank you both. Any other, any other additional comments from anybody at the board? Okay. We will go on into our vote. So Bruce, we'll start with you.
Aye.
And Fred.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Johanna.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, six in favor and no opposition. So the motion passes. Time is 6:39. We will now have the public comment period. This is for items that do not appear later on tonight's agenda. So if you are here for one of the, here, for the hearing that is next on our agenda, or one of the second hearing, this is not, don't speak about this, that topic. I always read the names of the people, the public attendees that I see in the attendees list. So I'll do that now. And while I do it, if you have a public comment, then you want to make that comment tonight, please raise your hand while I'm reading these names. I see Charlotte Ortad Jackson, Christine, Christine Brestrop, Elizabeth Vierling, Hetty Startup, iPad number three, John Armstrong, Catherine Naughton, Ken Rosenthal, Kristen Lamoureux, Lisa Juris, Maria Kopicki, Mara Keane, Nancy Eddy, Paul Juris, Sherry Wilson, Steve Maybe, Stephen J. Casey, and Uta Diamond. So that's a total of 19 attendees at this time. All right, so Lisa Juris just raised her hand. Why don't we bring her over? And Lisa, you can speak about something that does not appear later on tonight's agenda. Please give us your name and your street address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yeah, my name is Lisa Juris. I live at 22 Macintosh Drive. I'm here in support of the, of all my, my community and my neighbors.
Are you here, are you going to be speaking about the Archipelago project in your neighborhood?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so this is not the time for that comment. That does appear later on tonight's agenda. So at that time, we are, we, you know, we asked for comments during those hearings. Okay. Any other comments not about items later on the agenda? Okay, I don't want to cut anybody off if you're deliberating, but I think we will move on. Time now is 6:41. The third item on tonight's agenda was advertised for 6:35, so we have, we are okay with starting this hearing. This is a public hearing with a site plan review. SPR 2025-10. Applicant is the town of Amherst, location 1046 Southeast Street, Munson Memorial Library. Request site plan review approval to construct an accessible walkway and ramp with railings and modifications to the southern entrance porch and other site work, including drainage improvements and landscaping. Under section 3.334 of the zoning bylaw, the parcel is located in the RN zoning district and the is that ARP overlay zoning districts, it's on map 20D and parcel 49. All right, Nate, are you presenting for the town?
I am. Rob Moore, the building commissioner, excuse me, has something unexpected, so he can't be here tonight. Shalaya.
Yes, you, you may present.
Sure, thanks. Thanks, everyone. Nate Malloy, a planner with the town. So this project is, stems from two things. The town had updated its transition plan, accessibility, you know, ADA transition plan, and looked at municipal facilities, and one was, you know, one is the libraries, and this was identified as, as a, as a problem at the Munson Memorial Library where the southern exit coming out of the, the meeting room brings you to stairs and a grass lawn. There's no accessible route back to a sidewalk or anything. So the town applied twice to the Massachusetts Office of Disabilities for a grant to, to fix this, and we were successful last year and was awarded this in the fall, late fall. So we have, you know, grant funding to complete this project, and it's limited in scope to, you know, exterior work on the library in terms of a ramp and railing and guardrails. There is one other component, and that is, these are old doors in the library, so they're double wide doors, double doors.
Do you think you are sharing screen?
Yeah, I'll, I'll share my screen in a second.
Okay.
There's automatic door openers for this project so that it will meet the accessibility standards. And if, let's, I will go to an aerial view here, if this is visible for everyone.
Yep.
So the, you know, here's the main entrance off Southeast Street, been existing walkway. The entrance is on this side, the south side of the building, and so currently there's a portico with two steps down to grass, and there's, there's actually a, you can tell people walk along this. You know, there's desire lines, but nothing formal. So the idea is to adjust that, the entry here to be zero step, to come out onto a landing, come out far enough to then have a ramp down and then a walkway essentially at grade that connects to the walkway in the front. Within, between the walkway, this isn't exactly the scale, between the walkway and the building, there's going to be new yard drains, but then daylight over here, there's an existing catch basin, so it'd capture the, the drainage in between these two, take stuff off the foundation and the walkways and direct it down here. So I'll start with the, here's the proposed layout. So, you know, during the site visit, there are some questions. I will say that the building commissioner and facilities looked at having this walkway come out even further. There is some grading issues. It's almost a foot different, different to come out. Originally, it was, the idea was to come out almost 18 feet off the building and have a generous walkway here. It did get into tree roots and it added significantly to the cost. So they brought it in close to the building, so, you know, a zero step entrance out of the door to, you know, this is all concrete work, new concrete work to a landing, and then a 12-foot ramp, and then this all is a walkway that is essentially at grade. There's both guardrails, so essentially like a fence that's on the north side of the building, and then handrails, which is required on the ramp. So there's, you know, a double loop handrail. The existing columns will be cut and then shortened to match the new height. There's a lamp under here in the portico that'll be raised up. And then there's, as you can see in the plan, there's yard drains that will daylight behind the library. And it's proposed that between the courtyard wall and the foundation, it would be gravel or a natural stone, actually, for drainage and ease of maintenance. There's been discussions, the designer review board looked at this. I'll go to this layout view. They, they asked if there was an ability to remove the, I'll call it the fence, just so it's not confused with the handrail.
Guardrail.
Yeah, the guardrail is different than the handrail. So they thought maybe it looked a little heavy. You know, it's hard to say in this, in this kind of, you know, drawing how it looks. And I talked with the building commissioner about that, and, you know, there's three codes that are, in, you know, that are applicable here. There is ADA, AAB, and building code. And the new building code requires essentially a four-inch by four-inch curve, continuous curve on either side of the walkway. And then also, you know, double handrails. And so you don't have to have a curb if you have a guardrail that then had, you know, has a low, you know, protects the perimeter and doesn't allow something that's four inches in diameter to roll off or, you know, fall off the ramp. And so there's a few different things that have to happen. And so although the designer review board, you know, had asked the building commissioner and staff to investigate whether or not this could be removed, I think the decision right now is to leave it in because the, the other design changes it a bit and actually, you know, complicates drainage with curbing. And so the idea is that the, the guardrail will match what's on the north side of the building. There's already an existing set of railings and guardrails. So just to orient everyone, here's the south lawn, here's the, here's the portico. And so, you know, this becomes a zero step entry right here. This is concrete, so it'd match this grade and come out. These steps would be removed, the columns would be shortened, everything here would be shortened to match the new height. The walkway comes along across the lawn. Here's the corner, front corner, and that connects to this existing walkway, which is relatively new. So here's the front lawn. You can see where people have already been walking. On the north side of the building, here is the guardrail that it would match. So square balusters, square posts with a cap, and then here's the handrails. At the site visit, there was questions about saving this rhododendron here at the corner and try to move the walkway out. And so the building commissioner said that, you know, the, the whole plan would change quite a bit. You know, it'd actually have to, this walkway would have to come out at least five more feet. And it, you know, this would be a much bigger landing, and we estimated the cost to be $10,000 to $12,000 extra to accommodate that by moving this. So there's an existing bench and trellis here that need to be moved. And so if that were to remain and be usable, you have to have, you know, an accessible approach to it. It can't just be right on the sidewalk. So you need a certain distance off a turning radius. Essentially, you need a five-foot turning radius in front of it to accommodate that. So it couldn't just be like, let's move the walkway three feet and have a bench still. You'd have to move it a full five feet. Basically, the width of this walkway, you know, it'd move the whole width. So instead of being here, it'd be like, you know, mirrored and that much further off the building. So that's something that we don't think is, you know, is part of the plan. I agree, this is a mature rhododendron. At the same time, we could add additional planting or transplant that as part of a condition. There's no changes to the site lighting. There's existing wall lighting here and a pole light here in the front. There's no other changes to the site or inside the building.
Is that it for your presentation?
That's it, yeah. I think we have a, if there's questions or comments and.
All right, Karen.
Would it not be possible to have, I, I understand the difference in heights. Being there at the site review, it just, bringing that sidewalk out, I realize now $12,000, but is there not a way you could make a curve? I mean, this is an old library. It has so much charm. And just to make this straight thing, get rid of the rhododendron, get rid of the bench, all these charming aspects. It's just really sad to me. I don't know, does this have to be so linear? Is it so expensive to kind of make it a little bit more rounded, or is this because it's handicapped accessible that it has to be so straight? I just hate to give up the, the idea of bringing it out because aesthetically, I think it was so much nicer. So I'm wondering if there's a less cost, you know, less costly way that you could still slope around. Was that discussed at all, or is that just from a building aspect, not really a good plan?
Yeah, the, um, so there's, you know, there's an existing tree here and two mature maples out front. And so the idea was to really not impact any of the vegetation and work with the grade. And so the building commissioner has said that if this, if we wanted to keep the bench that's here and the rhododendron, this walkway would then come out and have to be here. And the difference in grade, say, between here and here is almost a foot. And so then what that does is you have to have a longer ramp, and it's a lot more concrete to get to this level. And so, you know, what he determined is that, you know, having then a ramp that's instead of this long, maybe it's this long with extra handrails and guardrails and that extra concrete, you know, it adds at least $10,000 to save the rhododendron. And so we, you know, we don't have the budget and we don't have, you know, so we would, we would, you know, offer that there could be plantings on the outside of the walkway, but, you know, the rhododendron is so, you know, if we were to just move the walkway here anyways, we would clip its roots. So we still would propose to try to transplant it as part of the project and plant new, but not move the walkway. You know, and then you're saying that you need this, this approach to the bench. So you can't just have the walkway in front of the bench. You need the five-foot turning radius diameter there for, for the approach.
Bruce? You're muted.
Nate, what's the estimated cost for the complete project?
We have a grant of a hundred and, I forget if it's 105,000, and we're estimating that all this will cost 120,000, including the door openers.
Okay. I don't think you have to spend 10,000 to 12,000 more dollars to root the pathway around the rhododendron. Because you don't have to think that this is purely geometrical and rectilinear. You can keep the, the pathway, sorry, the ramp exactly where it is, but then gradually curve the, the path out around the rhododendron and then either take it straight down or back to where it is. You would add a small amount of additional length of pathway, and that's all. And I can't accept that that's a 10,000 to 12,000 dollar add. I think that's, that's somebody thinking, somebody, somebody designing an alternate that who doesn't want to succeed. That's, so I submit that that is nonsense, frankly. Because I think that you can, you can easily curve sidewalks. You know, they have flexible forms for, for curving a sidewalk, and you just curve it around the corner of the building. So you add a, I don't know, 5% or so to the length of the path, but that's all you're doing. So you're only adding 5% or so, maybe 7% of the length of the path to just bulge it around the rhododendron in that location. And, and it's going to look nicer because instead of being a sharp, it is, it, yes, it doesn't have to have, you know, something like that. I mean, I would, I would make it a curve. I would just curve it, make, turn that right angle where the rhododendron is, is into a curve, and it would be just bulge it out a little and then around. And Bob's your uncle. You've solved the problem and you've left the rhododendron where it is. And you probably, you probably spent $1,000 moving the rhododendron, and you'll spend $1,000 on the sidewalk. So you're basically saving this, you're saving them, you're spending the same amount of money, and you've just got a better result.
Yeah, I mean, if I could respond, the only thing I see though is there's a desire line that cuts the corner here. And so if we have some path that does something like this, no one's going to walk on this. They're just going to do this. And so, you know, what we've done here is we've actually tried to cover the desire line, which is as tight to the wall as possible, and also keep the shortest distance for accessibility reasons. And so right now, this is an exit only, but I think the thought is that this would become, actually could become then another entrance, and it becomes a, you know, it's, it's both, it would be, it could become a main entrance and exit to this space. And so instead of having to get through the library proper, you could, you know, it seems like, and the parking for the south, the church, most of the parking is actually on the South Congregational Church here. People have to walk around, but there is a, an idea that this could be connected to the parking lot in the future. But I think this becomes a, a pretty important route.
I agree, but I, the, the, your so-called desire line is not going to be transgressed. People will follow the sidewalk. It's, it's almost direct. And in order to, in order to, in order not to do that, they'd have to walk through the rhododendron. So I, I think it would be more graceful. It would keep the rhododendron is. Could some, Pam, could you bring up the picture that I sent of the rhododendron? I think people should look at this thing. It's, this is not just a, a dead bush. This is a beautiful, established, graceful, well-situated piece of planting, and I'm, I'm not sure that, you might be able to transplant it successfully. Not, I would think, for less than the cost of rerouting the sidewalk.
Bruce, Bruce, just so I'm clear on your opinion, are you also, are you okay with removing the bench?
Oh, I, I, I don't care about the bench. I mean, this way you could keep it where it is, which would save some more money.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I could share that. I see it's in the packet now.
I got it. There it is.
So that's what we're getting rid of. And I don't think that that's a good idea because that's nicely situated, and I think we should just walk around it, basically where that, where that walkway, where the, where the worn pathway is at the moment. You just follow the, the concrete around there and then, and you, I mean, that's what I would do. And frankly, I think it's so easy and so obvious that so far, I'm not inclined to support this with my vote, and if I can persuade some of the rest of you to join me, then maybe we can make this work a little nicer than it is at the moment. But it seems to me it is so obvious, what, what, the, the way to do this, and, and I'm, I'm not persuaded that digging up that bush is a good idea.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Next, we have you, Johanna.
Thank you, Doug. I have three basic thoughts. The first is kudos to the town for raising the grant. That's awesome. Second, I think we should be as sensitive to our town budget as possible. And three, I don't fully endorse the idea of planning around the rhododendron or around the bench. Part of that might be ignorance on my part, so I don't know. Are there other rhododendrons that are on the site? Are rote, you know, is this variety native to Massachusetts? How long does it take for a new rhododendron planting to reach this size? I just don't know the answer to those things. And then my first thought on seeing it was that the rectilinear path actually mirrors some of the rectilinear paths that are already on the site. Because my initial thought was also, oh, it should be curvy, but then when I looked at the actual structure that's there now, none of the architecture is curvy. It's all lines. So I just think aesthetic considerations may vary, and, you know, I'm not an architect and I'm not a designer, so. But for, so for me, those other two things, kind of like, we raised the grant, we should be as sensitive to our budget as possible, and I think aesthetics can vary. So I would be inclined to support this project in its current form, but I am also, you know, open to being educated.
All right. Thank you, Johanna. Jesse?
Thanks, Doug. I'm seeing a disconnect between the aerial photo with the path drawn on it and the site plan. And really, my, my real question, I'm assuming we can't go to the south because that's not town property, but why can't the, the ADA path go straight out to the street and just slide the ADA parking down and avoid the whole issue altogether, if it's like the site plan? Because the site plan, the proposed path is, looks like six or seven feet to the south of the wall and the rhododendron and the bench. That, that, you understand what I just said, Nate?
Yeah, so the satellite view, I can, I'll share my screen again. We, we had done this when we applied for the grant, so this isn't necessarily accurate. This was just an illustration showing what we were proposing in our grant application.
So could you bring that straight to the street instead of?
There's, there's two existing, or three trees, but there's one here and one here that would be damaged if we did that. And then there's actually a, a hedge and wall. So the, and then the sidewalk isn't wide enough. So the reason why this becomes accessible is that the DPW Public Works changed the road here and changed the elevation, so it's, it's, you know, it's now flush.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I think, as you can see here, just quickly, the, here are the cars at the church, and so the idea would be in the future, could there be a direct connection to this parking lot, which the town has an agreement to be able to use? And so, you know.
So could that not just happen instead of making the bend?
Well, that's, we don't have, we don't have an agreement or anything to do that. So what we, what we applied for was to do this. Negotiating a walkway straight out here is something for the future.
Because that was my first thought, honestly, it was, why not do that? But.
Just go right out, yeah.
All right, so I'm, the, the, the hands that I can see at the moment are people that have already commented, so I'm going to comment for a moment first. And I did not make the site visits. Did anybody who had done a site visit want to make a site visit report, or is, are we, is that irrelevant at this point?
The site visit was myself, Karen, and Fred, and Karen and I have, I've certainly given what I learned at the site visit, though. Fred could, Fred could add whether there's anything from the site visit that we haven't already reported on.
Fred, anything you wanted to say? Fred, anything you wanted to say? You are muted.
I, I think it's been pretty well covered. I I'm inclined to agree with Bruce. I it, it's already been suggested that the rhododendron be moved. And the approach that Bruce suggested wouldn't cost any more than moving it. And that's, it's likely to be in the cards anyway if we don't do this. So I, I, I tend to support Bruce on this.
All right. Thanks, Fred. So the question, the comment or the question I really have is, I think the design review board talked about whether the grade could be, the slope of the ramp could change to one on twenty so that you didn't need the guardrail. What is the answer for why you still need the guardrail?
So they, the design review board had suggested that if, you know, you, if we make it one and twenty, it's now a walkway. It's not a ramp. So you're not required to have a guardrail or a handrail. However, they still wanted a handrail. Because people would need assistance, you know, on any slope surface. So their recommendation essentially was if it's not a ramp, could it just be a slope walkway and have handrails? And once you get up on an elevated surface, you still need to have some kind of curbing or something. And so.
So does the curbing need to happen if grade is, is flush with it?
No, but once you start elevating, you know, once you're getting up on a slope walkway, you're going to be up off the grade, you know.
And you could, you could fill grade up to it.
But that'd be meaning filling up eighteen inches. So that'd be.
Yeah. And then you don't have a guardrail out in the landscape.
That's a long way to chase the grade down. So there's existing trees and vegetation that, you know, to grade out eighteen inches to make it something more than like a three to one is pretty far.
Okay. All right. So I'm hearing that, that you don't think that's feasible. I guess I will just comment that I've been involved in several efforts to run sidewalks around plantings and that only makes sense as long as the planting is there. You know, one fungus or virus or whatever might kill a rhododendron and suddenly you have a walkway that doesn't make any sense. So I, I would not vote to support Bruce's proposal. I think the rectilinear route is what we should do and and let the plantings fill in around that. Although I agree it's a beautiful rhododendron. All right. Now we'll go to the hands that remain and, and then we'll go to the public if anyone is here to talk about this. Karen?
You know, I agree that a rhododendron isn't the most valuable and you could replant it. But if you had been at the site, I also agree that having not this rectilinear right smack up against the thing, I just think that curving it, I bet you any landscape architecture who looks at it would, I think it would just add a lot. It just seems like that's where the people have walked because of that. And it just seems like a natural thing. That's why I feel that a slight, that, that, you know, ask Rob Mar, is it really so important to have this be so straight? Yes, maybe the building has all straight lines, but walks in old buildings, meander and a curvature is just adds a lovely feeling in that particular space. If you were there, just, you just feel like gracefully going between, between the tree and the rhododendron seems a nice way to approach, especially if this is going to be the main entrance. I think it's going to be much more inviting than being smack against the building.
All right. Thanks, Karen. Bruce?
This is just to chase the answer to Jesse's question that Nate gave. It's, from the site visit, it seemed to me that there was a moment of confusion there, Nate, because do, am I right in understanding that the connection across to the church parking lot, that pathway would not achieve an accessible standard? It's simply a pathway to connect to that parking area. So if that's the case, then it doesn't, it doesn't solve Jesse's, it doesn't, Jesse's suggestion isn't relevant because the future pathway would not achieve an accessible, wouldn't be intended to achieve an accessible standard. Do I recall correctly with the grades and so forth that that would be the, that was the intent of that future pathway?
Right. So, yeah, we, yeah.
Why don't you untangle that? Because I don't think Jesse's comment was about that connection.
Well, I, I would say that, you know, we don't have the permissions to connect, you know, a walkway to the parking lot, although people park there and use the library. There's an agreement, I think, that they could. Yeah, the, the parking lot is up higher, so that grade hasn't been worked out. That's outside the scope of this project. So you know, what I said is that the, the walkway will essentially be at grade at the lawn of the library now. And there's a possible connection to the, to the, that parking lot of the South Church. But, you know, whether or not it's accessible hasn't been explored. It could be, but it might then be like this, like a ramp or, you know, it couldn't be as direct as just a straight line right out from the entry. So, I mean, I think what Jesse was asking, again, this is not what it's, you know, I think this is easier to see as a, in the line drawing. Jesse, I, I thought you were asking, could you just come straight out here? And then this becomes the, essentially the accessible route into the building. Like I said, this is outside the scope of this project and I'm not sure the grades work to have this be an accessible, you know, route. So, you know.
Jesse, why don't you tell us what you were asking?
So, so the answer was yes. I was asking, well, for my first thought was yes, go straight like you just drew it. But then I realized that's not town property. So probably that's not okay. But then I asked, why not make the first turn and go straight to the west? And I think Nate, you said, no, that doesn't work because there's shrubs there, something, right?
Oh, there's two mature maples, there's a brick wall, shrubs, and then a sidewalk. These aren't accessible parking spaces. So if we brought them out here, it's, we're no closer to the accessible parking spaces than bringing someone to this route.
Yeah. So the route of the path has to be that way.
Anything else, Jesse?
No.
Okay. All right. I guess I'll ask if any members of the public want to make a comment on this. Now's the time to speak. All right. I've got a couple people raising their hands. Pam, why don't we bring over Steve Maybe first? Steve, you'll have three minutes and give us your name and your street address.
Yeah, Steve Maybe. I'm actually representing 1066 Southeast Street, which is South Congregational Church and the Board of Trustees. We don't have any problem with the design. We appreciate this. I have many a violin recital in that room. And I think having accessible access would be very important. We also appreciate the fact that the town removed the forsythia bushes that were along the border between the church and the library because they were overgrown and it was very difficult for people to get out. And it is true that people park there and walk across the grass to access the library. We don't have any problem with that. We, the agreement was back in nineteen seventy-five when we made an agreement with the town to provide and allow parking on that side of the church. And we continue to be in favor of that. Is there any plan, Nate, of to put any landscaping along that boundary? Or is it going to be open as it is now?
Yeah, thanks, Steve. There's no plan right now to provide landscaping. So, you know, if in the future there's a, there'll be, you know, there may be a plan for the site, but right now it's just the ramp and walkway.
Hey, thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Steve. All right. Pam, why don't we bring over Maria Kapinki?
Pam, would you like me to do that or?
Oh, here she is.
I think I just brought her over. Thank you, though.
I think I'm in. Be good?
You're in.
Great. Thank you. So first of all, very happy that Munson is getting some TLC and hopefully we can get on to the other stuff at the Munson soon, which is getting those air source heat pumps in there, getting the insulation and so on. For this project, I, I'm right there with Bruce and Karen. I can't remember the term that you used, the intention lines. You can see where people have walked. People typically walk in a more curved manner when they're coming around a corner like that. We don't tend to walk like military and do a big harsh ninety degree angle. So I think that the curved thing is, it's not, I mean, we're talking not much money, maybe no difference at all by the time everything comes out in the wash. And I think that would be just a, a great solution. So I really hope that you do that curved maneuver that Bruce is talking about. That's it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Maria. I thought I saw a third hand at one point. But it seems to have disappeared.
Yep.
Okay.
Here we go.
Okay, here's Hedy Startup. Why don't we bring her over? Hello, Hedy? Please remind us of your name and your street address.
Hedy, you'd have to.
And you will need to unmute.
Sorry, sorry. I'll start again. I'm Hedy.
There you go.
I live on North Pleasant Street. And I'm very curious about this project. Really glad that accessibility is being addressed. I think, given that you're not really creating a, a full landscape plan that goes along with the accessible ramp, it would be best to leave the plantings in place and that way we'll know down the road what's there. It's a beautiful building. It's colonial revival. It's a very important building in, in Amist, even though it's not, it doesn't have its own national registered designation. I think that, you know, less is more in this case. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Nate, you've gotten comments from the board. Do you want us to vote on what you've shown or should we continue this to let you think about it with Rob and come back?
Yeah, I mean, Rob, you know, I spoke with him today and he said if, you know, there wasn't really a decision about the rhododendron to continue it, you know, if, you know, this grant is supposed to be completed soon. So we are pushing a deadline. But we, you know, I think the, I think really would, would be understanding, you know, how much of a, of a sweep and you know, if really that's a possibility. So.
Well, it's not even clear to me that a majority of the board agrees with the, the curve.
Yeah. I'll share my screen again. Is that, is that visible for everyone?
Yeah.
I guess, you know, Bruce, my question would be if we, you know, you know, if the walkway does a start here still and you're talking about something, you know, you know, generous like, like that, I, I get, you know, some of it would be, you know, what, how much does that? You know, what is, you know, if it is something like this.
Yes, that's more or less the thing. I mean, you would curve it so that it was within the easy capacity of the, of the flexible form work that's used. But, but that's the intent. Yeah. Just do that. And, and Doug makes a thoughtful and intelligent point that plants are not as permanent as brick walls or concrete walks or buildings. And that should we flex this whole thing around a, a single rhododendron? And I think we should. The rhododendron is and can be very long-lived, although we saw this last winter, the rhododendrons got hit pretty badly. This one didn't, which is a good indication perhaps of its fortitude. But in a sense, we would be creating a planting area. So if that rhododendron, you know, ages out or, or dies, then there would be a, a, a place to put something similar. So I, I mean, I think, as I said, Doug's is a, is a thoughtful counterargument, but I'm not, not fully convinced that we, we should deviate, that we should stick with the rectilinearity.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I would say that if we were to continue this, we'd make the case to not change the walkway and you know, I think we would say that this rhododendron is probably actually already overgrown. It's space. You can see it's over the wall. So at some point it's probably going to be heavily pruned just because it's already going, growing over the wall. And so my recommendation would be to we could transplant this and also plant new rhododendrons on the exterior of the walkway as part of a condition of the, of approval. So if it were in this, in this, you know, the walkway stayed here, you know, plant a rhododendron out here. I mean, realistically, the rhododendrons get really big. So even if, you know, you buy it and it's two feet in diameter, it's going to become an eight foot diameter bush. So you really need a, you know, a ten foot wide space to accommodate a nice rhododendron. And so I think that this is already outgrown. It was probably planted, you know, a foot, not even a foot off the wall. And so it's probably already hitting what is its, you know, limit on that side. Anyways, we, that's, I'm, I'm assuming Rob was going to make, we talked about it. He, we would probably suggest putting rhododendrons around this corner then with ample green space around here to grow.
So Nate, why don't you come back with an actual site plan? You know, I mean, something that shows the planting and the curve. And what's happening between the walk and the, that wall that's twelve inches away from it? You know, is that, you trying to sod that or is that gravel?
It's, it's a natural stone, like a river, like a river stone, like a, not, not quite as small as a peystone, but right, it's a, it's a, it's a stone for drainage. So there, there wouldn't be any plantings in that, you know, fifteen inch space. It's, it's a, you know, lower maintenance material.
Yeah.
A washed bank run stone.
Karen?
You know, I, I suggest, Nate, could you ask, maybe Rob Mora, really, I understand that he doesn't want to change the entrance, but he, he maybe didn't think of making a curve. And making a beautiful curve is maybe something that would appeal to him. I don't, I don't think we have to stay, it's exactly as Hedy said, people don't walk boom, boom. They like to meander a, a little slope. So couldn't we, I mean, I hate to vote it down because I agree it's great. You got this grant. You're under time pressure. We don't want to hold it up. But I just feel it could be a pretty simple and a more beautiful, in my opinion. And I think, you know, if you, it would be good to go there and look at it on site because that's what, that's what the three of us did. And we kind of agreed that this is, this would be an, a beautiful addition. So how hard is that for Rob to conceive of just bringing that walk around? It doesn't have to be a big curve, just gently sort of come out there and swing around in a gentle way. Could you ask him that or?
Yeah. And I think, you know, there is more material costs, but we, it's something we can look at. I mean, if, right, if, if, if there's no decision tonight, I'd rather continue it to the eighteenth and then pick it up again with some revisions.
Well, why don't we at least get a straw poll at the board? So I'm going to ask each of you, do you prefer the curve or do you prefer the plan that Nate presented? So Bruce? Curve, right?
I have the, yes, I prefer the curve, the trajectory of which is in my head. So it doesn't mean that everybody's curve is the same as what I'm imagining, but I'd prefer a curve.
All right. Fred?
I would prefer a curve also.
All right. Jesse?
I'm on the fence, but I guess I would like to see the planting proposal if it's going to be the straight.
So you're abstaining at the moment?
Correct.
All right. Johanna?
Be inclined to support the plan as proposed.
Right. I'll let a rectilinear. Karen? Your curve. All right. And I'm a rectilinear. So we have three curves, two rectilinear and one abstention. Bruce or Nate? I think I'm, let's continue this and come back.
Sure. We could make a motion to continue to six thirty-five on the eighteenth if that's. Sure, we could make a motion to continue to six thirty-five on the eighteenth if that's.
Yeah. All right, I make a motion that we continue this hearing to six thirty-five on June eighteenth. Does anybody want a second? Bruce?
Yeah, second.
All right, thank you. Any, any further comments this evening? Johanna?
I want us, I want to make sure that we don't get in the habit of not trusting the expertise of our town staff. So I'm looking forward to hearing, you know, budget numbers. And I would, I would be inclined to trust the town staff budget numbers as presented. That feels like that's why we have staff. So, yeah, and then we've, we've gone through a couple of sidewalk proposals around the Bang Center. Nate, my, my other question is just like, what is the timeline? And by when do we need to spend this money? And when do we need to do that work? And when do we have capacity to do that work as a town?
Yeah.
Additional things.
Yeah, I mean, this needs to be substantially completed this month. So what we're, you know, what we propose to do is still bid it. And then, you know, even if we, you know, the idea is to bid it next week and still get someone on, you know, under contract that could start some of the work and then bring this back on the eighteenth. So it's not, you know, it's not ideal. We were running up against the clock. I will say, some of these grants, what's really difficult is you get awarded, you know, contracts assigned. I think we were awarded in the winter. By the time you finalize plans and go out to bid, it's, you know, really, it's a type, it's always like this. It's always, you know, you have two months, maybe, maybe a month to do the work. And so, which is fine, we can, you know, we have a, we have a timeline. We could ask for an extension. They're unlikely. But I think there's, as long as it's substantially complete, which, you know, if we think the ramp and the landing remain the same, we can, you know, get started on that end and on the other end and then meet in the middle, so.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Bruce, you've got your hand raised. No? Okay. All right, so vote to continue, starting with you, Bruce.
Hi.
All right, Fred?
Hi.
Jesse?
Hi.
Johanna?
I'm abstaining.
All right. Karen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That's five in favor, one abstention. All right, this, this hearing is continued to June eighteenth at six thirty-five. All right, time is seven twenty-seven. What are the next item on the agenda? All right, so this is another public hearing. SPR twenty twenty-five dash zero eight and SPP twenty twenty-five dash zero one, Archipelago Investments LLC, Gould Way and Lanin Lane, continued from May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Request site plan review approval under section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw to construct a new mixed-use development with three buildings, including a hundred and forty residential units, approximately twelve thousand square feet of commercial space, a hundred and forty, four hundred and eighty parking spaces and associated site improvements, and request special permit under footnote A of table three, article six of the zoning bylaw to modify the front setback beyond the maximum required, building height to exceed the maximum allowed and the number of floors to exceed the maximum allowed. Located in the BBC zoning district, map twenty-five B parcels fifty-two and fifty-eight. So Nate, why don't you just update everyone on the word from our applicant?
Right, I know there's members of the public here.
Yeah.
The applicant has requested that the hearing be continued until June eighteenth. And so, you know, not to take any testimony or have any, you know, comments or review done tonight. They're going through review with the Conservation Commission. And so they're not ready to present any updates right now to the planning board. And so
Okay.
They have requested in writing to continue it to June, you know, June eighteenth. And we could say at six forty-five P M.
June eighteenth at six forty-five, yep. All right, so I think with apologies to the members of the public who have been waiting for this to come up on this agenda. I'm sorry you have spent the time and you're not going to be allowed to make comments this evening. Thank you for coming and I hope you will come back on June eighteenth. I cannot assure you that they won't ask for a continuation again. But June eighteenth is when we will continue the conversation on this. So I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this hearing to June eighteenth at six forty-five. Bruce?
Don't move.
On a second, Jesse?
Second.
Thank you. I guess Nate, it's your advice that we're not going to make any commentary about this project.
Right.
So we will go right into the vote. Starting with you, Bruce?
Aye.
And Fred?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Johanna?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, six in favor, no opposition. Motion passes, so we will continue this hearing at six forty-five on June eighteenth. All right, thank you, everyone, for getting through that. Jesse and then Bruce, I assume we're not talking about the project we just finished.
No, I have a procedural question related, related to the project, though. Is there not a way to stay within the hearing to let that be known publicly earlier than an hour into our meeting? Thinking of the participants who, you know.
Well, we could have reversed the order of, of topics in the meeting. We couldn't have done it earlier.
Or is it because you have to open the hearing, then announce it, then have the vote officially not happen?
Right, we, I mean, the, the board could, you know, there could have been, what if the board didn't agree with that? So we, we have to, we have to open the hearing as scheduled and then have that voter discussion on it. You can't, you know, we could let people know it's likely to be continued, but we can't say for certain. So it's a.
That it is okay to say something like that, that it's likely to be continued?
But, you know, I would still encourage everyone to attend because what if, what if it is?
If people leave and then we go ahead and have a hearing.
I understand.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, so.
Yeah. Bruce?
Yeah, you, I'm going to do a bait and switch. I was going to make a comment related to that, Jesse. I was going to say to ourselves and also to the attending public that folks have spent an hour waiting for this. I spent two hours today preparing for this with the expectation that the meeting was going to happen. There wasn't a lot of new material there, but nonetheless, I thought I needed to be ready. So it's not just people who've been turned, you know, have been waiting in the meeting for an hour. I spent twice that amount of time today for the equivalent result of having a continuation. So just, it's, it's, it's not all one-sided here.
Yep. All right. Next. Topic number five, it's seven thirty-two, general housing discussion. Nate, do you want to talk about the housing production plan?
Sure, yeah, the consultants would like it to come back on the eighteenth. Eighteenth is a lucky number. There is some public comments were, you know, received. And they're, they're going through those and through the updating the plan. And so staff has met with them twice. They'd already started working on it after coming to the planning board and the discussion. And I think, I don't think they're going to be, there'll, there'll be some changes to the plan. I think there are comments about some of the data collection and some of the points being made. And so I think from staff's perspective, some of it just has to be qualified. I think it's, you know, there's some questions about the number of off-campus students and number of year-round residents and other things. And I think it's really hard to take the census information and then correlate it with data provided by UMass. The census doesn't accurately count students. You know, they are supposed to report where they are year-round. But anyways, so some of it's just explaining that maybe a little bit more in the report and understanding some of the unmet need and housing demand. And if the students are accounted for that, you know, qualifying a little bit or mentioning some things there. So, yeah, I think, you know, there, like I said, there are some comments that add some questions. And so they're addressing them. And we told them to get a plan to us next week, so the board would have plenty of time to look at it before the eighteenth.
Okay, Jesse?
Thanks. Yeah, I apologize. I missed the last meeting when this was discussed. And I made some of these comments, I think, in this subcommittee. But when I read the report a couple of times, I was very surprised there was not more inclusion of the student population in the rationale for what they're proposing. Like, I don't necessarily disagree with what their conclusions were, but I'm not sure it fit our town demographic. And so I would really love to see some of that in there. Yes, we have a need for lots more housing. There's no doubt, and that's their main conclusion. But how is it not going to get just gobbled up by students? And there's no, I read zero about that in that plan. So if that feedback could get to them, that would be great.
Okay.
Good.
All right, the next item on the agenda was continuing discussion of a potential overlay in North Amherst or where the existing apartment complexes are. Nate, anything you want to say about that?
No, I mean, I, you know, I, I think Bruce and I, Bruce has done some work. The Housing Subcommittee discussed this. I think we're, I think staff needs to sit down and kind of come up with some technical language about it. I think, you know, we had determined last night at the planning board, you know, that this isn't just for students, but then how do you, how do you, if it's not a new residential use, how does the current bylaw work? And so, you know, staff's been talking about it. I think we had some ideas about zones where there's different heights in the overlay. I think the affordability requirement is something that's still, I think, important because if these aren't, if these essentially are just, you know, any residential units, then it counts towards our, our year-round number. And it would, you know, if we actually built out some of this in the overlay, then it would actually hurt our, our, our percent of affordable units. I think having inclusionary is important. Yeah, I mean, I think that's where we are. I know a property owner has reached out. We're trying to get a meeting just to talk about, you know, what, what they think. You know, is this something that's feasible or, you know, worthwhile? You know, I, the town did discuss this, like I said, in two thousand thirteen. At the time, some of these properties hadn't been expanded or renovated. And some of them are kind of minimized now and have done upgrades in the last twelve years. So I think there's still potential here. You know, just trying to work through it all. I know the police had said if it was really built out this way, it's, you know, they would, in a conversation, they said something, they just want to make sure that it, you know, roads and everything, safety is still, you know, can be managed. And so, you know, we haven't, we don't have any site designs or anything like that. So I think some of it is, you know, they've been working on environment, you know, safe design, right? So not creating areas where there could be large congregations or, you know, where sightlines are impaired. And so I think it's really hard to have some of that in an, in an overlay where you might have some flexibility. And so, you know, I guess we could have some conditions to that. But we're, again, we're considering how do you write that into a zoning regulation?
Yep. So is it reasonable for us to think the ball is in your court on moving this forward at the moment?
It is. Yes.
Okay. Board members, anything, anybody wants to contribute to this conversation? No? Okay, all right, well, with no further ado, we will move on. Time is seven thirty-eight. So the next item is new business topics not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance. Anything, Nate or Pam?
Not for me.
No.
Well, I'm going to use this moment to, to ask you about something that was in the packet that appears to me to be on a subject that was not in the agenda. So in the packet that I received, Nate, when you dropped it off in hard copy, there is a comment, a letter from Ranny Parker dated May ninth that talks about the management plan for construction of the Jones Library. And I've seen this comment before. I, I believe it was submitted as though it was a comment related to the Archipelago project. And obviously, it doesn't have anything to do with the Archipelago project. But since I'm seeing it again, has anybody responded to Ranny from the town to say how, you know, that you've shared this comment with Bob Parent or whoever's managing the Jones Library project? Because this is really not a planning board issue.
Right, so some of the neighbors have emailed. I responded to some. I don't know if Ronnie has, if someone has responded directly to Ronnie. You know, the, you know, so I think the, the neighbors have been asking, you know, the Jones Library construction project will begin soon. And, you know, what's happening with, you know, essentially what's happening, the construction logistics plan, what's happening with, you know, traffic and noise and what's happening with, you know, all of that associated with the project. And in the, in the permit, the planning board, we had a pretty detailed discussion on that and conditions and a plan. And so right now, the general contractor is working with the library and Bob Parent, the product manager for the town, to, you know, review all of that. If there's any changes or things that they want to request, they would come back to the planning board at a public meeting to review those. And as far as I know, they haven't determined some of those things. For instance, where contractors would park, where the work would park, you know, staging areas. What's the place to store materials? You know, and in the, in the decision, we said certain things like, you know, here are some possible property, town-owned properties or in the front yard of the Jones and contractor should park here, but not here and noise and everything. And so we haven't, as far as I know, the contractor hasn't proposed anything different than what we conditioned. And so, you know, I don't know if anyone's responded to Ronnie. I think I, it's a good point, Doug.
Okay, well, I mean, I was a little puzzled that it showed up in the packet. And I'm, I guess I'm not sure why you guys included it, but, you know, nobody's asking us to change the conditions we put on the permit. So, you know, I don't see it as a planning board issue yet.
Yeah, I think it was addressed to the planning board, so we were just included.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, well, so I guess I'll assume we don't need to think anymore about this unless you come back to us that some conditions need to change.
Right, yeah, we'll let you know and it'd be on the, it'd be on the, an agenda item.
Okay. All right. So moving on, any topics not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance for, for old business?
I think the, it'll come up at the next agenda, four forty-six, four sixty-two Main Street. John Robleski had developed an apartment building, you know, down by the railroad tracks on the north side of the street. There was a condition that he returned to the planning board or, I think it was, it was actually returned to the planning board eighteen months after occupancy to talk about parking utilization. So, and he's done that. He's taken pictures at different times of the day and different days and written a brief narrative in an email describing what he sees as the parking. And he would come back and present that to the board. One of the conditions was, there was kind of like ghost parking if he needed to, to add parking. And he doesn't think he needs to. There, it seems like there's vacancies. But anyways, he'll come back and if he's not there, staff could present it, but it's fulfillment of a condition that was put on a project, so.
Okay. Is that going to be on the eighteenth also?
Yeah, I told John it could be on the eighteenth. It's a public meeting item. It's not a public hearing. So the eighteenth is getting crowded.
Yeah, I'm, I'm starting to think we may need to have, serve coffee at that meeting. Okay. Form A and R subdivision applications?
No, we, we haven't gotten one. We're, we're anticipating one, but we haven't gotten it yet.
Yeah, I think, yeah, maybe two will come in.
Oh, two, okay.
Be two in the next week or two.
All right. Z B A applications, anything of interest?
I'm not aware of anything. I did see plans being reviewed by a planner, but I haven't gotten a transmittal. Nate, are you?
Nate, are you?
No, there was the withdrawal on High Street to remove the owner occupancy, um, requirement, so that application didn't move forward. There's one on Belcher Town Road where they're working through, I think it's a three-family, I'm not sure what exactly they want to do. Uh, it's an existing three-family, it's a new owner as of last year and they want to uh, do something with a property, I, I am not exactly aware of what it is, but, yeah, there's not a lot. We're assuming maybe at some point, um, you know, the shoe spray load solar would come back, but they have, they're going to do wetlands and other things first. And so it's probably a while before it gets back to the zoning board.
Okay. All right, just for the record, it's now seven forty-four. Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports, Bruce, anything from PVPC?
No report.
Okay, Jesse, anything on the Housing Subcommittee?
Uh, nothing of substance, we need to set some new dates for summer, we haven't met.
And Karen, design review?
Nope.
All right. Uh, I don't have a report. Nate, anything for staff?
Yeah, I was gonna, I think, uh, in upcoming SPR, SPP applications, University Drive, uh, well, what it was four twenty Amity Street is now might be five University Drive, that's the Barry Roberts project. They are considering coming back using the overlay to have a sixth, uh, floor. And, you know, that might be coming up in the next month, uh, they are working on it. Uh, you know, they're looking at what, you know, if it's feasible. So I, at one point I thought they thought it was, but I haven't heard, so maybe, you know, with all the, the finances and everything. So, you know, what Tom Reedy explained is that they would probably come back for an approval and, you know, and then gauge what happens in the next ninety days to see if they could lock in financing or make it work. Whether or not they'll do it, it's just they want to have the permitting in place to then get financing and materials ordered and everything just to, to understand what, what it looks like, but I, I'm not, you know, maybe those have changed. Um, I will mention the ADU, uh, bylaw, you know, Plenty More recommended it, I hope to get it to council. The state in the last week or week and a half has the, um, have put out, gosh, over a half dozen determinations on the new, you know, on, on, you know, town submitting, uh, bylaw changes. And so, um, they're starting to look at the square foot calculation, so the way we define it as habitable space, they recently determined, um, may not be accurate or follow the regulations, so I was going to look into that a little bit more. It's still going to move forward, I think what we have is what the Plenty More recommended is fine, and if changes need to, uh, be had during the hearing process because of the state, it can be, um, you know, some of, you know, the, uh, most bylaws were passed in the fall town meeting that they're getting to, so they didn't know, you know, the regulations weren't actually out yet, but I think we can move it forward, there is interest, uh, you know, I think the town's getting more inquiries for property owners, both, you know, homeowners uh, and investors. Uh, there's a few homeowners who like the idea of the local provision, I think they've been following. And so there's been a few calls who said that they would like to build something over nine hundred square feet and it'd be okay they have to have an owner occupant, uh, owner occupancy requirement, so it's something just to consider that was in the bylaw. Um, you know, I always mention the downtown design standards, Dodson and Flinker is hoping to have draft standards available this month, later this month for the public to review and for boards and committees. We have, you know, set aside, you know, five to six months in our schedule for this review. So it'd involve, you know, review by the planning board, design review board, the public, uh, other boards and committees. And it'd be, you know, probably a few different times where comments could be submitted and they might revise them and then bring them back. And the idea would be to try to finish the standards this calendar year. So, um, you know, they said they, they've been busy with, I think they do a lot of work around, uh, with grants and other communities. So fiscal year end, June thirtieth is pretty busy for them, um, but they're still working forward on that.
All right. Anything else from anyone? Johanna and then Jesse?
Thanks, sorry, I have two just quick follow-up questions, I hope Nate. Can you give us an update on the hiring for the Economic Development Director slash Planning Director, where that's at? Um, and then, I know, I think we currently have a vacancy on the board, so I'm just wondering, like, is that a, like, are we, are applications rolling and anybody could join the board or is there a certain term?
Sure, yeah, thanks, I, I meant to discuss that. Yeah, the search for a planning, uh, and Economic Development Director is underway. I think it was, uh, maybe about two weeks ago, week and a half ago, it was officially publicized. I don't, you know, know a timeframe, I think, probably be in the next few months, uh, that there'd be, you know, interviews and a selection made. The, uh, as for the board members, the CRC, uh, Community Resources Committee holds those interviews for Planning Board and Zoning Board, and so they're meeting on June twelfth to review, I think it's five candidates for the, uh, there's two, um, current members whose appointments or terms end and then there's a vacancy. So they're, you know, they're looking at, you know, having interviews and appointments by, hopefully by the end of the, end of the month, but. I don't know, I think, yeah, that is important, I will say if, um, you know, for instance, you know, the, uh, Gould-Lanin Project, Archipelagos, depending on how that goes, if it's continued, you know, and we lose members or don't, it just changes, you know, the quantum for votes. And so that, you know, also becomes important if there's a new project heard on the eighteenth and it's, would be continued into July. So for instance, if, um, you know, Barry's project comes back, I would almost recommend at this point that they, you know, not be heard until July, just in case there's turnover on the board. You know, you know, to, if we lose enough members for votes or if someone, you know, if in July someone's, you know, during the hearing process, if it's a three-hearing, um, project and someone misses two and they can't vote and we have an issue. So I, yeah, it does become important at this time of year when terms expire.
All right, Jesse?
Thanks, uh, just want to make a quick comment about something else that was included in the packet, which was this letter from Shelley, uh, Newgang. Apologies if I pronounced your name wrong, not sure if she's listening, but I just wanted to thank her for the letter and the thoughtful response to some of our town needs, so I'd encourage her to keep up with it and I'll definitely consider those thoughts as our conversations move forward.
All right, so if no one has anything else, time is seven fifty-one and we can adjourn. Thank you all and we'll see you on the eighteenth.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay.
All right. Good night.
Good night, pause the rest, stop the recording.